Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Revere City Council Subcommittee Committee at the Hall. And we have an agenda item to discuss regarding the renovations of the Old McKinley School and the bond issue regarding that. So with that, I guess, Mr. Mayor, if you want to say a few words, you are end of it first?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. First off, I want to extend my thanks to the City Council for your support in moving the city's agenda forward. You know, anytime you vote on spending any kind of money, it's never a popular vote. In fact, as I reflect back to some of the comments that then Senator Anthony Galucchio said when we were doing the dedication of the Revere Police Station and Fire Station next door, that we spent and voted for $21 million. And for some reason, his comments really resonated with me that day because he wasn't talking, as everybody else was, about what a beautiful building and the police department, fire department have these new facilities. He was speaking as a municipal official and really talking to the City Council when he said, "This isn't a popular vote. You didn't make any friends taking this vote, but you had the courage and you had the vision to know what is best and what was needed in your community as elected leaders." And I kind of view those comments in the same context as the vote you took the other night. You know, it was just about for the same dollar amount. It was just about $22 million. But, you know, it was because, as elected leaders, you recognize that there are needs of the community and in order to create a more stable, more vibrant city that encourages people to stay and live here and not look for greener pastures after they graduate from high school or college, that we make the necessary investments that it takes to stabilize our neighborhoods and to build on our neighborhoods. So I just want to say thank you once again to those councilors who supported these initiatives. Now, this initiative that was sent to Ways and Means is a piece that, you know, arguably you could say, "Well, you don't need to authorize these funds." And like any bond authorization I would send before you, I, you know, if it was your decision to not approve it, I'd walk out of the City Council chambers with my tail between my legs and go figure out what we're going to do next. But this was, as I said that night, part of an overall financial package that I wanted to put before the City Council so that we had a clear vision on how we're going to go forward and, you know, how we're going to address our situation right through the construction and occupancy of the new McKinley School. So our goal has been, and continues to be, to keep that asset on our books. It is a very, very, I'm trying to remember who it was that was talking about, I think it was Dr. Dakin, who was talking about the Paul McKinley School and how while it's not even close to providing a good, I guess, with respects to the 2013 education for the kids, you know, you have no gymnasium, you have no cafeteria, you have no, you know, all these things that people in other schools and really any part of the state of Massachusetts would come to just expect, those kids have had to go without. And I know probably maybe some of your kids have had to go without that went to that school and before that. So this was decision time for us to finish this package. But one of the things that was said was while all these amenities weren't in the building, the building itself was structurally sound. The roof is sound, the exterior walls, the envelope of the building is sound. And so, you know, we thought, we thought that, you know, keeping that building, I mean, it is a, when you look at it, it's a very, very, it's a good-looking building. It's architecturally, I think it's a beautiful building. We have spent money in it over the years, I believe, you know, some significant money just to keep up with it. And so we thought we'd keep it as a municipal asset, move Dr. Dakin's office over there so we can put the kids, put classrooms into where right now administrative offices now sit so that we don't have to put kids again out in the hallways to teach them like we're doing now at the high school. It's because, you know, this is a, this is a, and I actually, I don't know if any of you had a chance to see it, but I actually mentioned it in today's journal, and that was that this, I believe, is a shared vision. I want it to be a shared vision of, you know, not just the administration, but of the City Council and the school committee, the school department. This is, you know, you know, these are things that we're doing together and we're not, in fact, it exceeds far beyond us. It goes out into the neighborhoods and out into the community. And I know that, you know, as I say, you know, we could, we could argue if we say, you know, geez, maybe we'll sell the building. But then what do we have there? What are we doing in the big picture to our community? So our goal was to, once the kids were safely moved over to the new building, move the superintendent's office over to the McKinley. And then, you know, but in order to do so, it was going to take some investment. You know, regardless, I mean, I think, I think Councilor Powers might have mentioned that night that, and it was a very valid point. He said, you know, geez, if the school population continues to grow and we're short seats, we may need some of that school, which I would hope that not be the case. But let's just say for the sake of discussion that we would. I would certainly still want to spend the two and a half million, if I'm going to spend two and a half million to put the superintendent's office in there, I would certainly want to spend the same amount of money if I'm going to put kids back in there because the building's going to be three years older at that time. And believe me, as the conditions sit today, and many of you know this, it is not optimal for the learning experience for any of those kids, faculty, or anybody else that goes into that building. So this two and a half million is not going to be spent today. You'd strictly, you would just be authorizing us to spend it when the time came. But again, it would give us that ability to plan and to have that, and to have that certainty that when the time came, we have approval and can go forward with doing what we need to do, which is to move those offices to create more space at the high school. Some of you may know that we recently applied for a grant that would have built new science labs at the high school. But, you know, because of the, because of the situation at the high school and, you know, the overcrowding and everything else, that we, we were denied that grant. So we really, you know, we, we have to really start thinking about ways on, you know, how we can, you know, tackle these problems, as I say, together, not, I know sometimes, particularly with these last loan orders, it seemed as though it was getting a little contentious. A lot of it was played out in the press, a lot of it was played out that night. That's not the way that I want to see anything happen in this city. I want us to be able to go around the city and celebrate our successes together. I don't want this to be, this is a win for you, a win for me. That, that's, at the end of the day, that's meaningless. We all go on the ballot and get elected. We just happen to hold different offices. But at the same time, we get elected because we want to do good things for our community. So, you know, I'm hopeful that, you know, this final piece gets approved, but if councilors have reluctance in granting us the authority to issue that bond down the road, then I'll have to live with it, like I would any, any vote that you would take in the negative. So I'm here to answer any questions. I don't know if, Mr. President, this is your meeting, so I don't know if you want to hear from our Director of Finance or Superintendent who's here, but they're here obviously to support the loan order if you'd like to hear from them. I'll end my comments here and you can hear from them, or I'll take questions, whichever you prefer.
Actually, I'd like to open it up to the councilors because we already had the public hearing and we've heard from just about everybody, all 200 people that were here the other night.
Whatever you prefer, Mr. President.
At this, you know, this is more of a question and answer period for us to you because you're the leader of the pack.
That's arguable.
And I'm going to, I'm going to open it up to Councilor Rego first and we'll go right down the line and everybody will just say their piece. Councilor Rego.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did voice a little bit of reluctance to passing this bond authorization on Monday and mainly my thought process is we don't have to do it yet. I do have a couple of questions and I do want to make it clear that I wouldn't want to sell the building. You know, I think that is an asset. I think we should hold on to it. I think we should wait to see what we, what our needs are in three or five years, when, when the use of the building is actually going to be needed. But I, I do have questions about the site and about the ability for the school department to pay for it. But the biggest question I have is will this prevent us from having to build a new high school? I know that's, that's something that's kind of hanging out there, you know, it's a, an elephant in the room.
My apologies.
No problem.
This, I, listen, there is nobody that wants more than me to not have to build a high school, trust me. I do not want to come before the City Council and ask money for a high school. So as much as we can keep the high school going the way it is and then take it kind of one, you know, I mean, we, I, at least in my mind, I'm, you know, Dr. Dakin would argue with me on this for sure, but I'm taking a year-by-year approach with the high school. We just, we, you know, we don't, I don't know where we would get the money. In fact, I met with the MSBA, with Dr. Dakin, to talk about why we didn't get the science lab grants, and they were very clear saying, "Well, we believe after going through and assessing your application and taking a tour of the high school that you need a new high school." To which I pretty much thanked them for their time and, and that was pretty much the end of that discussion, you know, because we're working on this, still, the school building project that we started back in 1999. So to answer your question, Councilor, I don't have a good answer for you on that as far as what are we going to do? I don't know. I mean, we're going to have to just continue, we're going to have to make best with what we have for now. I mean, if we don't have the money, we don't have the money. Unless the MSBA wants to give us 100% grant, we're not going to have the ability to build a new high school. But we do need all the space we can get, which is why at that time, you know, we're looking to, to move his offices out of there.
Yeah. Do we have any idea how long we could, having the offices in there would prolong the use of the high school? Are we talking about a couple of years or, I mean, eventually, at some point, we're going to have to build a new high school? So if we, if we have to, if we have to move offices to keep the high school running for a couple of years and I think that's something we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to do, I just want to know if, if there was enough space there to maybe prevent having to build a new high school? And it sounds like we don't know yet.
You know, to be honest with you, maybe, I don't know, Dr. Dakin, do you have a good answer for that? Would you mind if Dr. Dakin took on that question?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Because I, I'm not sure. I don't know.
There's certainly room that will help the high school. The trouble with the high school is different. The reason they want us to have a new high school is not because of crowding. That's not the function. The reason is it's not a 21st century learning environment and they, they were in our science labs, they know they're bad, and they said, "We don't want to pour good money into these labs where the rest of your building doesn't meet the 21st century requirements." It will be problematic. Our accreditation was done last year, it's done every 10 years. If the ball is not rolling or if a new high school is not coming out of the ground within that 10-year period, we will, virtually by the visit of the Director of MSBA and what he said to us in the mayor's office, it will endanger the accreditation of Revere High School. So that will be coming at us. I would say in the five-year report from NISAC, that's the accrediting body, they will make it clear that the promise to do new science labs has not been fulfilled, that they signaled to us actually 10 years before this last accreditation. But what we got by with this accreditation was we had the application into the state to, so that was our rationale for them re-accrediting us. They knew we were taking positive action. The positive action now with MSBA on record not giving us that grant and saying it's not a 21st century learning environment, when we have to do a five-year report, if there aren't concrete measures in there showing progress towards a high school, and I won't be here at that time and I won't be here in 10 years, but we will jeopardize, absolutely jeopardize, the accreditation of the high school. So we will be the only one around without an accredited high school. This is something that we may not think has to be done and that is fiscally imprudent to do. But at this point in time, 10 years from now, all thoughts should be going in and down the road that we're, we've been fingered, that we were fingered by NISAC 10 years ago, again this year, and now we're fingered by MSBA. It's something the community is going to have to address or risk not having an accredited high school. That means your diplomas aren't going to weigh towards colleges like they do now, regardless of the performance of kids.
And now, it sounds like we would need to build a new school and it's not that renovations would be good enough to create a 21st century learning environment. Is that correct?
I think it's, I think the general thinking, and they, they have walked through this city, virtually walked around the stadium, they have walked around the high school site, and their feeling is it's probably a four-story facility, four-story facility next to Remney out on the highway, and then you flip the fields with the other high school, then you demolish the old high school. That's the general consensus of what it would look like.
So by the soccer fields.
By the soccer field, where the soccer field is and back towards the baseball field, a complex that would be a new high school, and then you drop the new high school and you put the parking probably somewhere where it is, and then you build the fields out down towards School Street.
Okay. And as far as, I guess, switching gears a little bit, as far as the actual site, McKinley, is there an oil tank? I've heard, you know, I've heard conversations about an oil tank being on, onsite and, you know.
I would, I would, I would probably bet there's an oil tank that has been filled and remediated properly and in the ground, probably sand-filled or not. The thing about the McKinley site, and this is totally your opinion, and, you know, I think there's advantage to get, there's advantage to passing this bond component now because if the school department knows absolutely that there's, there's, there's been a signal from the council vis-à-vis approving this bond today, then not am I, not only am I going to do the kind of things that we do to make sure that building's safe for the kids there over the next two and a half years, but we would start to try to do some more extraordinary maintenance. In other words, with funds from this year's budget, next year's budget, and the years after, we would be chipping in to the renovation project that we know has been approved by the council with expectation that out three years from now, bonding money would be available to continue it. Without that promise, what we will be doing is keeping it safe for the kids and doing normal maintenance, but it would be foolhardy for the school department to be doing any extraordinary maintenance in there over the three budget years before that. So what we lose, if it's just going to be approved in three years, we lose the functionality of utilizing extraordinary maintenance funds that we could channel that way and make it even a better place each year for the kids and a better place that is already somewhat upgraded before that bond money even has to be tapped, if at that time it even becomes tapped, because Council Powers makes a good point. Who knows? The elementary enrollment may be so bad by then and there's not another elementary coming out of the ground within that time that it has to be utilized. The idea was that the space would be utilized for school and city functions, this place is crowded, and also in the back of our head, the place where we need to expand in order to help ourselves is early childhood so that if there was space still available and it was rehabbed appropriately, that we could start some more early childhood kids in an early childhood center in that building. So we would cohabitate with office space and potentially some kids, or even if there was space enough, cash in on some office rental space. But as far as the immediacy of this bond, you know, what it does to the school department if approved today, it gives us a signal that there's not going to be an argument in the future about the use of the building. It's bonded out and it's, it's coming and staying in the hands of the school department for the use in cohabitation with city side, and it allows us to do some extraordinary maintenance and chip away at things more aggressively than we would if we weren't. That's why I think it should be, the bond should be approved today.
And one, one other question I have is as far as the payment or the repayment to the city, is there a memorandum of understanding or will there be a memorandum of understanding between the city and the school department to make sure that this is an agreement that kind of goes past?
We have memorialization agreements like that and there certainly would be. You know, the, the money for the bond, for the 2.5 million, is in reality less than we would be spending out of the school budget to go occupy some other place. So in reality, the city keeps an asset, an even better asset. We, if you approve tonight, pour some more money in now to even jump-start the renovation project, then when the time starts, we renovate and it's all being paid by the school department. I, I don't know why it's a big issue. It's, this is the least expensive of all the bonds to this honorable body who, you know, approved a massive amount of bonds and thank you for that, for the, for the kids.
And finally, the bond is for 2.5. I know the budget that we were given shows 1.9. Is there any thought about the, the play, the 600,000 that is a little bit extra? I don't know if, you know, you guys have any ideas about what that might be needed for in the future?
I think, I think it's the trap we're in with people saying 85 million and the reality of what it is now, X number of years later. So I don't think you want to get in that trap by saying, "Well, you said you only needed 1.9." But also the fact that, you know, when a bond is approved, you know, and it's like anything we do in the school department or for the city that matter, there's a, you know, we're frugal in what we're doing. If we can get away with 1.9 million at that time and it's, the building is, given handicapped accessibility is safe, it is warm, it's tight to the weather, it's doing what it's supposed to do, you know, we would be foolish to spend the extra money. But, you know, so it's a combination of how predictable is, you know, the estimate. Things usually go up, not down. And we don't want to get in that 85 million dollar trap again.
And just to clarify, this is a, this isn't the cheapest bond. The cheapest bond that we passed was 2.1 for St. Mary's. Thanks.
Good correction. But it's also one that you're paying. It's the cheapest one in payment to the city.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Corrigio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Rizzo, Dr. Dakin, thank you for coming before us. Basically, what I'm looking for is this 2.5 million. Will this be absorbed in any way within the school department, looking out for the taxpayers? I don't want to see a major increase in taxes.
This, this, this will, and in fact, Councilor Rego had just asked about this memorandum of understanding that will be, that will be signed. This MOU or MOA would, you know, will be signed between the school department and the city where money will come back to the city on what's called a Schedule 19. And that's money that the city pays for school bills, but the school ultimately is obligated to pay for that. The school does not have the authority to go out and issue bonds. They cannot go out and bond for anything. The city has to do that. In this case, this, in this case, the, the school department is going to pay 100% of the bond. So I think what Dr. Dakin was talking about when he said this is the cheapest of, or the least expensive, he was talking about to the taxpayer because we have to, the city has to meet net school spending every year. That's by law. We have to do that. So if we, if we give the, you know, the school department what we have to give them, what they do with the money after that is in the superintendent's hands. That's, that's statutorily his job. He, you know, now we ultimately approve the overall budget, but if we're meeting net school spending, I mean, that's pretty much, he does what he needs to do as superintendent to make that school department run. He is going to have to find the money, the same way the city would have to find money to pay for things that we have to pay for. He's going to have to find that $200,000 or $250,000 or whatever it would cost him to go move his office out of the high school and into some other space. Now, we're hoping that that space is going to be the McKinley School. And if it's the McKinley School, what better way to spend that money than to put it back into a building that's owned by the taxpayers as opposed to putting it into some landlord's pocket that may not even live in the city of Revere? Right? So, you know, this is the logic behind it. This is the thought process. You know, they, it's, you know, as I say, from the standpoint of anything you voted on, on Monday night, this has literally zero, zero impact. When you voted on Monday night, I talked about we were presenting this, these bond authorizations within the confines of Proposition 2.5. That, I guess you could say, in some ways, has no impact on the taxpayer because we go up 2.5% like most other municipalities anyway. There's not a lot of municipalities out there that is saying, you know, "This is great. We're issuing tax, you know, you know, we're going to be taking a tax reduction this year." At least none of the mayors that I'm talking with have been able to make that case to their respective city councils and residents. So, you know, taxes are going to go up 2.5% anyway. This is within, when you factor in projected new growth and 2.5, we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, and so now, now it's up to us. It's up to the administration and up to the, you know, the City Council at budget time to make sure that we're paying our long-term debt, to make sure that we're, you know, that we're meeting all of our debt service and, and, you know, in addition to that, funding all the departments, you know, that make the city run. So, but this here, it's, it's zero cost. I mean, if you were to not, if you said, "Look, I'm not going to approve the bond authorization," I mean, really, I guess what it does at the end of the day is just take any extra money that they might have otherwise spent on the building because they don't have that assurance away from the investment into the school. But as I say, you know, you can safely take this vote and not have to be concerned that it's going to make one bit of difference to the taxpayer. In fact, we're not going to, this isn't going to happen for a few years. So you'd just be giving us the authority. This is, you know, so it's not even going to have an impact on the school department. You know, they can't move in there until the kids leave, you know? This is for planning purposes. As I say, this was part of an overall financial package that we wanted to vote on so that the city had a roadmap to follow in order to take us to that next level, right? So that's, that's the reason that it was put in with the, with all the other loan orders.
Thank you very much. The other question I have goes to Dr. Dakin about student enrollment. How many students do we, is it about 6,000 students we have in the school system? How many students?
Just over 6,800.
About 6,800? About 6,800?
Mm-hmm.
And?
It's the largest number we've had in over 30 years.
And how do you see the future? Is that going to continue to escalate? Are they going to level off?
I would hope that it levels off. If it doesn't, we're in trouble. You will need another elementary school if it doesn't. I am not going to lie to you.
And that's what I'm leading up to, you know, with Council Arigo was talking about the high school. Are you seeing another school towards North Revere that we're going to be involved with?
I think as we watch over the next, we know we're going to come in online with another almost 200 seats with the new McKinley. So, and we're crowded now, so it'll, that will relieve some of that crowd and then also offer a cushion. But if we go up, just think about it, if we go up 240 next year and 240 the year after, like we've been going up, and then the next year we're opening up McKinley and there's 240 sitting in front of us, just say it's 200 even, which has been the average of the last eight or so years, that would be two, 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 600 more kids. Now we've got 190 more seats at the new Hill School. That means I'm short 400 seats. I don't have 400 seats anywhere. And that would necessitate a, a big conversation after we start school next year on whether we have to start getting prepared because 400 is another elementary school. That's another elementary. And I don't know, and I, I know it's difficult, but if the numbers keep going up and the city is allowing housing development to increase or uses different because of the way the properties are being used, then, you know, the school department has an obligation. We've got to educate the kids. And optimally, it's in an environment that is conducive to that, which means we don't want 40 and 45 kids in classrooms. This is the first year ever where we had over 600 kindergarten students. Our target number every year was seeing 500 kindergarteners or 500 first graders. We always, we usually saw about 440, 450 kindergarten students. And when they show up for first grade, because everybody doesn't send their child to kindergarten because it's not required by law, so the 450 would become a class of 505-10 in grade one. We're already knee-knocking now because we have over 600 kindergarteners now, which means when they become first graders, those that aren't being sent to kindergarten, we know there are some, there'll probably be 630 or 640 in kindergarten. And that's a complete mind shift for us in that we were usually expecting 500 to 530. So imagine that moving through the system each year. Every building gets more crowded and every space is tighter. And the predicament comes on the fact that you will be needing new schools. I know people don't want to talk about it, but Roseland is over 30 students coming out of there now. Right now, last year there was 20, this year there's 30. It's going to pop, as I had said before, and it's going, that place alone, change nothing else in the city. You're going to have hundreds of kids coming out of that place in five years, six years. And you're, I say you're because it's not going to be my problem anymore in five years, but you're going to be presented with the reality that you're going to need an elementary school. I'm just trying to tell it like it is. I'm not trying to stack a deck for a school department. I'm trying to prepare the leaders who have to think for the future of what the community's going to need. You are likely, if enrollment goes as it's trended the last eight years, 10 years, you're going to need a new elementary school. And if things go relative to accreditation and what the state and NISAC, which is the New England Association of Secondary Schools and Colleges, has told us, you've got those two agencies saying, you need a new high school. So those are problems that rather than hiding the conversations, I think constructive conversations and planning have to go on. And, you know, I allude back to the fact that the only way those conversations goes if we all realize we're swimming in the same fishbowl and that the school department's not in one fishbowl and the city's in another fishbowl. Because these growth problems are a city problem that solutions are not rooted in the school department, they're rooted in the community.
Dr. Dakin, student enrollment, is this common in other cities and towns, increasing in students?
Everett is increasing, Chelsea's increasing, Boston is decreasing. What's happened is Boston is flushing them out. Everett, Chelsea, Revere, Malden, big number increases, big, everywhere. Everett is probably even more than we are.
All right, Doctor. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, before Madam Vice President takes over, I had a request from Council Zambudo. He has a meeting at 6 o'clock and like permission to go out of order. Do we have a problem with that? Anybody? Okay, Council Zambudo, you're on.
Thank you very much. Thank you to my colleagues for allowing me to do this. I appreciate it. I, I'll be very brief. I said the other night, and I'll say it again, this is the easiest bond for me to vote for. This is a bond that has 100% funding source. I, I hate to use this term, but it's a no-brainer. It's absolutely a no-brainer. It's not going to cost the taxpayers a dime. So I wish every other, you know, I, I've been telling people the other night that I voted your grandchildren and your great-grandchildren's money the other night. And we had to do it. And, and I had to step up to the plate and vote for those bonds in order to move the city forward. But this is, is very simple. It's 100% funded, not under taxpayer. So I'm in favor of this and really that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Thank you, Councilor. Madam Vice President, you're on.
Thank you. I just have a couple of really quick questions. So if this is approved, what's the projected date of completion?
Well, we would, you know, we would have to wait until the kids were moved out or probably when they broke for summer. The school should be ready, the new school, the new McKinley or the new Hill School should be ready for occupancy in September of 16? 15, I'm sorry. The completion of the rehab is 2017. Okay. So completion would be 2017, completion of the rehab.
And what is the plan for the space where the superintendent's office occupies now? Let be more classrooms?
That's going to turn into classrooms.
Let be more classrooms.
More classrooms.
That's great. And my only other question is what percentage of that building is going to be used as rental office space approximately?
We, we're still, I, we're still in the planning process for that. I'm not sure, you may have just come in when Dr. Dakin was, he had talked, I believe, with Council Arigo about the possibility of maybe bringing some early childhood programs into, into that building. You know, so depending upon what's left, I mean, you know, personally, from a business perspective, I'd love to see us make money on that building ultimately. But it would have to be, number one, it would have to be the right type of business. You know, like you see, sometimes you go to, if you go to Cambridge, for example, you see these incubators where small companies, they kind of pool together and rent, you know, some office space. I think that would be good for a number of reasons in our community if we could ever promote something like that. Put it in an old school building, kind of, you know, you know, kind of a nice place to have growing and emerging companies maybe start out. But that's all kind of down the road. Right now, the only for sure thing that we know is that we want to move the administrative offices, the superintendent's office and the business offices over to the McKinley.
Going off of that point, I know at Salem State, we have a building called the Enterprise Center. And what it is, is it's all small businesses that have student internships. So possibly if we had businesses in that space, we could use it for the high school students to intern. So that would be another possibility for it. But I mean, I'm in favor of it just for the fact that getting the superintendent's office out of the high school offers more space in the high school because that building is kind of bursting at the gills. It's really, really tight and the classrooms are really large. And I can tell you as someone that's studying education, having a class with more than 30 kids is really uncomfortable and it's hard. And classroom management becomes difficult and I really got to commend the teachers in Revere because they're working with small spaces and it's, it's really phenomenal, the work that they do with it. So I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor. And I think you hit the nail on the head. The good thing that we have, we have options and it's great to have options. You know, there's certain things that happen that doesn't present any options to us. We will have options with this. And so I appreciate your comments, Councilor. Thank you.
Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't know if this is to you, Dan, or to Paul. Back about three months ago, we had a meeting and we were talking about the future of the school department. And one of the issues that was brought up and it was mentioned early but not at length, suppose we were told we need another school after the McKinley School. Was that, is that correct? I know you mentioned about the enrollment going up and if it goes up, without question, we need it.
Right.
Have we been told that we need one after the McKinley School?
We have, I, I think, I think, I think the superintendent is just keeping his eye on these future enrollments. I know I'm talking a little bit out of school, Dr. Dakin, but you know, no pun intended, I guess, on that one. But I think we're watching future enrollments. There are going to be, you know, the MSBA is requiring us to build for 690 students. That, we just didn't pull that number out of, you know, out of the air. They, they told us this is what you will build for. And, you know, even though there's currently 400 some odd students at the McKinley now. So depending upon the student enrollment, when that building goes to be occupied, we'll either be at, if we're not at capacity, maybe there's a way from, you know, possibly other elementary schools that, you know, we could maybe free up, you know, some, you know, depending upon the numbers in, in some of the other surrounding elementary schools if there were extra seats and, you know, but I, we're not sure yet. It's still too early to know.
We were not told by the state agency that we have to build, not formally, but they mentioned it and that's what Dr. Dakin's doing.
Based on the trends that are going.
Right.
Based on the trends.
All right. Now as far as the chargeback Schedule 19, would that take effect immediately if the city council approves the bond issue?
No, and I think that's the good.
Not Schedule 19? Just a transfer which will be in agreement between the city and the school department, correct? All right.
So they're not going to pay rent through the Schedule, so rent payments won't come through Schedule 19?
No.
Outside of 19? Okay.
Okay. Because I know with Schedule 19, we charge back. Okay, but the difference is?
Well, they charge and we charge. So, you know, like we'll give back under Schedule 19, we'll receive under Schedule 19. If this is going to be a lease agreement or something outside of Schedule 19, you know, I think, you know, at that point, it's, it's, it's probably more like semantics at that point. However we get it so that it's a legal document that puts the school department on the hook to pay the city, that's, you know, that's the way that.
There will be an agreement between the school department and the city itself.
Oh, there's no question about that.
When will that start?
Well, until we actually go and we issue these bonds and we, we start to use the proceeds, there's no reason, I mean, you know, this, all you're doing really that we're asking for right now is the authorization for planning purposes. We're not going to, this isn't going to happen for, what, another three years, four years, something like that down the road. But again, it gives us the opportunity to plan, to have that roadmap so that, as Dr. Dakin said, he can start to put extra money, which who would complain? That's a city building, right? We own that as a city.
Absolutely. No, it makes sense to me, but.
Right, right. So if he wants to put extra money into that building over the next three or four years, I'm not complaining, you know? But he won't put that extra money into that building if he doesn't have a sense of certainty that we're going to support that, you know, that effort into going in there. Because if he does go in there, there are going to be expenses he'll incur to, to have to occupy it.
Exactly. Now, mention the other city agencies that may occupy the old McKinley School. Have you given any thought as far as what agencies within the city?
You know, I've tossed it around in my own head. I haven't had any formal conversations with anybody. In fact, I think it would be a good idea if I sat down with the city council and talked potentially about maybe what agencies could, I mean, I look across the street over at the building and, you know, the inspectional services and, you know, they're having a, a difficult time now with leaky roofs and things like that. So, you know, I guess we'd have to assess the space and see what would make sense at that point. But, you know, really off the top of my head, I think, you know, mainly inspectional services is where my mind has been, but that's certainly a discussion that we can all have and figure out what we think the best use of that space would be.
Even the police substation instead of leasing it or renting it from other agency if they could move in there?
I'm sorry, what was that? A police substation?
Right.
That could be. I mean, right now, you know, where they're, you know, where they have the space across the street, that's at a very, very low rent.
Is it?
Yeah, very, very low rent. I think it's like $300 a month.
That's not bad.
So, yeah, yeah.
So the time, the time we're talking about, this will be the last comment, will be June of 15 for the completion thereabouts. It'll be in that, 15 to 16? 16?
Completion of what?
The McKinley.
McKinley would be 15.
Yeah, 15.
The school itself would be 16 or so.
Exactly, exactly. So we have time. I basically think it's a great idea. It shows planning, without question. It's, and I don't want to be redundant, but I will be, it's not costing the taxpayers one red cent because it's coming out of the school department's funding, which we still have to maintain a minimum school funding. So to me, it's not costing our taxpayers one red cent and it's planning for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
Councilor Pach.
Oh, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's the Council President.
Sure, Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you, Council President. What I want to say is that the reason there was a complete plan done is because at the end of all this, we have to go to Moody's and get ratings on these bonds. And the first question they're going to ask me is, one of the questions they're going to ask me, maybe not the first, is what are you going to do with the new building, the McKinley School? How are you going to fund it? What are you going to do with it? So on and so forth. So there's a need to show them that there's a plan in effect because they're going to say, are you going to board it up? I can't say I don't know. Are you going to use it for, for what? And I have to come up with an answer for them because they're going to say, okay, they're going to think of this building. Then they're going to look at, again, the maintenance of the building and what, what happens to a building. And then if we don't have an answer, they're going to start thinking, well, we're going to board it up, which we're not going to be doing. Well, depends on what we decide here. But at the same time is, this has to be some sort of answer to them when they ask me that question, when they come out to, and you know, I think, well, Bob, excuse me, Councilor Haas, when he was mayor, knows when the Moody's comes out, they ask these type of questions. And we've experienced this. So this is something that we have to be, to deal with.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Pach. Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I, I want to, I want to see, I'm going to vote for it because the last thing I want to see is another vacant building like the, the police station. All chances of saving that building is gone. And if he has the opportunity, if the superintendent has the opportunity to have further maintenance and maybe solve some problems that will save money in the future, I think he should have that opportunity. The, the idea that, have that ready when, when the new McKinley School is, the Hill School is, is ready for occupancy, that he can, he could move right, he could move right in there or close to it. The worst thing you do to a building is board it up and keep it vacant. I also, you know, I feel that, that we accomplished a lot of good things the other, Monday night. And I think that, I just want to make out, give out the point that nothing was shoved down my throat. I had the opportunity to, I made it, made it my opportunity. I was, unfortunately, I wasn't available due to an operation to make the early McKinley School building meetings, but I made a point to make, to make the, the last few because I had some questions that, that I wanted to ask. And, and I had the, and I got the answers and I, and, and that eventually helped me in making my vote. So, and I believe all my colleagues had that same opportunity. I mean, we just didn't, this did, this. this, this happened two months ago. This happened last year it started. So I just want to say that, again, that I'm, I'm gonna vote for this, because I think this is the end of the last and final issue that, and it's important that we do it now. Thank, thank you, Mr. President.
If I could just, if I could just say something, Counselor. Thank you for those comments, and again, it comes down to the, you know, giving us, what, what you'll be doing tonight, you know, no matter when, when that bond is issued, the school department's paying for it, right? So it's, it's not gonna be taxpayer funded, or it's not gonna be paid out of the, out of our tax levy. So it's a zero-sum game here, right? But it's so important for the planning purposes for that, because, you know, the other thing that happens too, if they don't have any assurances that the city council is gonna be on board with fixing up that building so that it meets a certain level of expectations and, 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 you know, gives them the, the ability to move into that building, they're probably gonna have to start to even look elsewhere, you know? So, so, I mean, I don't wanna lose a good tenant, you know? I mean, they, they are gonna pay us in excess of $200,000 a year to occupy that building, and that's a lot of money. That's money going back into the taxpayer's pocket. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, this, you're not spending a nickel tonight or whenever you ultimately meet to vote on this, but it just gives him and gives the city assurances that when the time, that he can start to make plans, and that's really what you're doing, is you're helping us make plans. The other thing I just want to say very quickly, and I know Counselor Zambudo left, but he was talking about when he bumps into people and he tells them that, you know, jeez, I just spent your grandchildren's money, your children's money and your grandchildren's money. I would only say that I would change that around a little bit. Number one, their grandchildren may very well be going to one of these brand-new schools that we've built over the last 10 or 12 years. So they, so what we've done is, we've given their, their children or grandchildren an excellent educational experience, or at least the best chance they have to achieve success as they go forward in their lives. The other thing we've given them, we've given them state-of-the-art facilities to play in, because it's not just about school. I'm a big believer, and I know many of you are, in fields and open space, and that's what you, that's what you did last Monday night. You gave the kids of this community a chance to have what many other cities and towns have, and that's good, solid, decent fields to play in and play on. So I would change that wording around. Instead of, and I, I know the counselor's not here, but, you know, nothing's for free. I wish I could say I'm building three new fields, a new, a new Harry Del Russo Stadium, a new school. It costs nothing. We're just gonna build it. Of course, it costs money, and every city and town is facing this. The ti, the city of Newton just passed two propositions, two and, two, uh, two and a half overrides after building $190 million high school. Now, people may say, well, that's Newton and they have money, and it's true. I couldn't really argue that. But the bottom line is, they want the same things for their kids that we want for our kids. I don't care how much money or how wealthy a particular community is. The need and the desire is still there to do the best you can for your community. So I'd kinda change that sentiment around and tell people, this is an investment in their, in their grandchildren and children's future. So that's all I wanted to say, Counselor.
Yeah, one, just one more point. I just hope that you're, you're as lucky as Mayor Kalala was, that when we had all those communities, those school, we had several schools around, the neighborhood schools, and, and the trend then was, there was, the students went down. So maybe, maybe you get lucky here. We, Superintendent Dakin, we get lucky here in the future that, that, and he sold off all those schools, if you remember. So maybe, maybe that trend might go reverse on us, so hopefully.
If I'm lucky enough to be in that...
Wishful thinking.
If I'm lucky enough to be in that situation, we're not tearing them down and building houses. We're renting them out just in case. So, thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Pinter.
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mayor, you actually took my first statement away, because the counsel mentioned to me that, you know, you sold your grandkids' money away, and I don't look at it that. I have written down here, I'm investing in the kid's future. I'm investing in this city's future. I'm giving them an option for, for, for my kids and their kids that, that live in Revere, and not to say I opt to go somewhere else. Because like I said, everybody mentioned Everett Stadium, this stadium, that stadium. We should be second to none, and with this stuff, we're gonna be, especially with the amount and the percent we're gonna pay for this, because everybody forgets, you know, to grant money, the state's funding 80 percent. If you had to do without it, we'd be lost. You know, and then you hear, well, the superintendent cares about schools. What are you supposed to care about? I think the fire, fire chief cares about fire stations, the police, and that's what it's supposed to. And we're up here to make a hard decision to finance it. And, you know, I think Counselor Pach said it, I am not short of any information, financial or anything, because I do know what it's gonna cost the taxpayer per home. You know, and then there's other statements made that the city does have an ordinance, and you can vote, this city council can vote any bond they want. No, you can't. You can't override two and a half on your own. You do need a vote from the people, and this is not bringing it to the people. You know, and it's a shame when these statements go to the papers and they're false statements. It, it really doesn't look good for the city. But with that being said, I'm still shaking my head from the other night. All these things went through, this one got put aside. If there was one that you voted on, and your theme was taxpayer, this is the one you should have voted on that night. All right, now you say, well, you don't really need it for down the road. Yeah, you do. I mean, the superintendent has to make plans. You have to make plans, and you know something? What better to do with that building than keep it in the city's hands and make money for the taxpayers if you rent more off it, you know, and put towards maybe some of these bonds or whatever, future things we may build? So there's a lot of reasons I'm far keeping that. It's about time we thought like business people in this city, and not just taxed the taxpayer. What's best for them? Because this, we voted on the other night. I'm proud that we looked out for the taxpayer, for as much money we're getting from every which way. It's, it's, if you weigh out what the taxpayer's paying and what you're getting at the end of the day, and I hope these people remember this day and look four, five years down the road when the stadium's built, the school's built, and you have the wow factor six or seven more times in this city, from the parks down toward six. I mean, you know, it's great to have the wow factor, because I hear from outside the city, people that live outside the city who work would say, jeez, what a great police station you people got. Never realized you had that there. It is the wow factor seeing that. And, you know, and it's about time we don't Band-Aid things. But I commend you for your foresight on this building. I will definitely vote, vote in favor of this. Like you said, it's not costing the taxpayers anything. If anything, we're making money out of it, and we have the options to do what we want with this building. I mean, would I mind seeing the citizen, citizen building in? Maybe not. But I like to try to make money for the taxpayers, so someday we can say we're holding the taxes down and low. And the other thing, I'm gonna make this last point, and, oh, shut up, Mr. President. No, all I'm saying is the prop two and a half, because I've heard that, and I haven't heard it in a while, but I've heard it here, and we're not voting on any prop two and a half for any of this stuff, but, but, every council up here knows, and I'm sure Haskins, Mayor, Mayor Haskins can attest to this, and Farmer Ambrosino can attest to this, the taxes always go up somewhere close to almost two and a half. All you're doing is saying, you know something? I'm telling you what you're getting in advance for this money. Because you're right, your hands are basically tied a little bit of what, what else you could do, unless the new growth really comes forward and, you know, and over-anticipate, which hopefully it does. But with that being said, what you're paying for your taxes with all this stuff being done, you'd be very close to paying the same thing anyway, and, and, and that's fact.
That's the truth.
Like I said, numbers do not lie. You know, one and one will always be two. So with that being said, I want to thank you for your foresight. I want to thank the superintendent, and, you know, people said the lack of information, lack of work. Ask Counselor Ritten how many meetings he went to on the building committee. You know, a lot of information was given out. With that being said, thank you, Mr. President. I will be voting for this.
Thank you, Counselor, and, and, you know, to your, to your, to your first point about, you know, being proud to take the vote or looking at it as an investment, you know, there's, there's many ways that people can, can spin that, you know? You know, I'm not a believer in spin. I, I like, I like to call it for what it is, and, you know, what you people did on Monday night was you invested in the city's future, and you invested in your children and grandchildren's future. That's what you did. It's, you know, you can, you know, you can talk about it like it's just this unnecessary expense that was a luxury to the city and really not needed, and a real hit to the taxpayer. But as you just explained, Counselor, and as I tried, I must have said it 10 times that night, this is within the confines of our budget. We are not looking for an override or a debt exclusion. This is, the, this, you know, you know, fortunately, is going to be able to work based on our two and a half and anticipated new growth. So, and we looked at everything because, you know, the last thing that I wanted to, you know, listen, nobody has a crystal ball. A budget's a budget. It's, it's a, it's a living document. It's, you don't know. I mean, you know, when we had to go through those nine C3 cuts back in 2008, you know, who was happy about that? I mean, who knows? I mean, you know, things happen. Sometimes they're outside our control, but, you know, the bottom line is, you know, we just can't sit back and, and just worry all day long, you know, and as a result, do nothing, and just let the city fall apart around us. You know, we've gotta make these investments that, that, that we believe makes sense. So, but thank you for those comments, Counselor.
Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the outset, I certainly want to thank Dr. Dakin for his candor with regard to his remarks concerning increased population in the school system down the road, and, and I feel the same way, based on what's happened over the past seven or eight years. I can see another 500, 600 kids when the new McKinley School opens. What are you gonna do with them? You gonna put them into an office building? That's one of the reasons I'm reluctant to vote for not two and a half, because when you throw in the debt service, it's $4.7 million, and that's a lot of money, $4.7 million. It may not be a lot of money to us, but it's a lot of money to people that are living on fixed incomes, that are living on pensions that maxed out 20 years ago, and they've only increased maybe by 1% or something every couple of years. It's an awful lot of money. And I got another question. We got problems down at the Garfield School. If we approve this bond issue, are we gonna be looking for another bond authorization to repair the problems at the Garfield School? I say if the school department can afford to put $200,000 plus a year into paying back a bond authorization, let's wait and see what the estimates come in on the Garfield School. You yourself said, Mr. Mayor, this isn't something you need right away. We don't gonna need this for maybe three years. We don't know what we're gonna get for mitigation money down the road, from Suffolk Downs, the casino. We may get very little, we may get a lot, and from the remarks I've heard out there, we're gonna get a considerable amount of money. You know, over the years, this city has been shortsighted. They sold the Akenback, they sold the Barrows, they sold the Walcott, they sold the Maybe, they sold the Roosevelt, all to developers who came in and put apartments and units in those and increased the school population in this city. Now, who's to blame for that? Certainly not Dr. Dakin, certainly not yourself, and certainly not this city council, but nevertheless, it happened. And we have to take a position here when we're bonding, not two and a half, $4.7 million. It's a lot of money. I voted for the McKinley School the other night. I voted for the Ballfields you asked for, and I voted for the stadium because I think those are important components of, of any city, to provide recreational opportunities and good classrooms for the children in this city. But I'm a little reluctant to vote for this. I'll be perfectly honest with you, because none of us, as you said, have a crystal ball. We don't know what's coming down the road. We don't know if we're gonna have a major problem with one of our other schools. We don't know if we're gonna have a major problem, something aside a city hall is gonna fall off or something like that. Those things happen. Those things happen. We have a police station over here, which is an historic building. Due to engineering studies that were taken several years ago, is safe, yet we can't find money to put a roof on that building and maybe get a Volk School project in there to rehab that building and take your inspection services department, or part of your school superintendent's office and put them in there. That's my position, Mr. Mayor, and that's why I'm reluctant to vote for this bond authorization. Voted for the other stuff, I think it's good. This here, I think, can wait. Let's wait and see what we get for mitigation money. Come, come back in a couple of years and tell me you need a bond authorization to do that school and put more kids in there. I'll support you 100% because I've always supported kids. I've got grandchildren that went to that school and grandchildren that are still in that school now. And as far as doing this for our grandchildren, we are. But you know something, Mr. Mayor? Our grandchildren are the ones that are gonna pay for this down the road. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so, so, so let me just clarify one thing that you said, Counselor. You said that I said it myself, it's not needed now. What I was referring to is the money is not needed now. The vote to authorize the bond is something that I'd like because it helps us plan. We're not gonna, the other thing that you brought up, and you keep saying $4.7 million, the debt service on what you voted on the other night is not $4.7 million.
I'm talking about this particular one.
No, right, but what I'm saying is, this bond that, where I'm asking you to vote on, that we're not gonna take any money from until 2016 or 2017, is gonna cost the taxpayer. If you were concerned about the taxes, there's zero impact on the taxes. It doesn't matter mitigation, no mitigation, you know, a financial crisis. This is coming out of their budget, and we're, all we're doing is, I mean, we have to meet minimum net school spending. This is a zero-sum bond game here. This is a, you know, I mean, we can talk if you want to say, jeez, you know, I voted for this because I think it's the right thing to do. I want schools, I want fields, and I want a stadium, but we're taxing people into the Stone Age. Well, if, if that's the, I mean, we can't have that both ways. It's like, we, you know, we take votes. I've taken votes over there. You know, I took a vote on the $85 million overall school building project. I couldn't have foreseen what would happen in 2008 when you had AIG and Lehman Brothers and everybody else collapsing. I mean, who could have anticipated that? None of us could anticipate that, but the bottom line is, we made that vote for the future of this city, and this particular bond here, you guys, as far as I'm concerned, this city council made a terrific vote the other night when you voted to invest in our future and our children and grandchildren's future. This particular loan authorization, bond authorization here is, I'm asking you for no money. I'm asking you for no money. This is, so if you want, you know, I'll accept, you know, if you said to me, I want to knock the building down, I want to sell the land, I want to do this, I don't like that building, I'll accept that. But if we're gonna talk about a financial impact, it's zero. There is zero financial impact by approving this bond authorization. All you would be doing is allowing us to plan. That's all. It's, there is gonna be zero, the hit to the taxpayer, if you want to call it a hit, happened Monday. This is not, this is not gonna have any impact whatsoever on the taxpayer. This is strictly giving Dr. Dakin and his successor, who, you know, I, I pray to God that he'll be around by, you know, in 2017, but whoever happens to be sitting in his chair at that time allows him to plan accordingly, so he can tell, you know, so he doesn't go out looking for other office space around and take that $200,000 of tax dollars and put it in some out-of-town developer's pockets, you know? This, this actually secures for the taxpayer, the fact that he'll take the money and reinvest it back into a city building.
Mr. Mayor, I don't, I don't think you can plan that far in advance when you don't know how many kids are gonna be in the school system. By Mr. Dakin's, Dr. Dakin's own admission, he's talking 200, 300 kids a year possibly coming into the school system. You know, my position is, if, if you don't need that money right now, and you just said you didn't...
The money, right.
And I, and I know you're doing a great job, from what I understand, getting... And I know you're doing a great job, from what I understand, getting all kinds of money from mitigation from the casino.
We haven't, we haven't received anything.
Well, I hear rumors out there that you're, you've got a good.
You shouldn't be hearing rumors because I've told nobody about what's going on out there, believe me. And, and if any, you know, if any counselor is feeling as though that I haven't been forthcoming with casino and mitigation information, you're totally mistaken because I, you know, it's, you know, as soon, I have, I made a promise to the city council way back, that as soon as we have a signed agreement, this city council will know before anybody.
So what you're saying is?
And that is still a fact.
There is no signed agreement?
There is absolutely no signed agreement.
With regard to mitigation or hotels or anything like that?
Nothing.
Okay.
Nothing.
Well, I have all the faith in the world in you, Mr. Mayor. I know you'll get us a lot of money. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor. I'm doing my best.
Counselor Reid.
Well, in light of the fact that Counselor Zambudo took off on us, I guess I am set to summarize the tonight's events, and I, and I will do so from my perspective. First of all, I think it bears reiteration. Voting to buy, to, to approve the bond is not voting to borrow the money, is not voting to spend the money. That's not what we're doing here today, tonight, or, that's not what we're contemplating here tonight. We're contemplating allowing the administration to bond if it's, if it deems it necessary and to refurbish this building if, down the road, it deems it necessary. And that gets me to my next point is, and I, and I'd ask Dr. Dakin, because I think he probably has this information, this 1.9 million figure, which I assume is a rough estimate for refurbishing the building, where did that come from?
Yeah, I mean, this was done by, you know, with our OPM collaborative partners.
I'm familiar with them. So that, but did they, did they offer that figure? And what's the context of that figure? Is it offered as a kind of like, well, this is probably what it costs you to refurbish it, or is it, did it take the specifics of, of what you're planning on doing?
There are, no, there's not a specific blueprint that shows architectural plans or anything.
So it's essentially a rough figure.
These are reasonable, yeah, like, these are just estimates that they made of what they felt it would cost us to rehab it.
Right, I, I get that, and I just wanted to be certain that we didn't have anything in planning. Because actually, that's a good thing. It's a good thing to a certain extent. What I foresee is, though, in, in the reason I'm in favor of this measure, among some of the other reasons that, that were presented, it seems to me that, that the advantages far override the disadvantages. But the major reason that I'm in favor of this is it will allow some planning to make, prevent us from doing something wrong with that building for the next two years that we may regret later on. I'm assuming, knowing that you have the funds to do what you want to do down the road, is going to help you plan a little bit better as time goes on, as to what exactly happens in the meantime. And that, to me, is the major reason for, for accelerating this process of approving the bond, as far as I see it. But I am very concerned that we have not seen the last of the McKinley School, quite honestly. I can foresee a time where we're sitting here talking about refurbishing this building or the building will be talked about being refurbished to, in fact, house children in an educational environment. And I, I am concerned about it. I understand that it is not predictable necessarily at this point, but I would, just as, as I've said up here a thousand times, not a thousand times, I thought it a thousand times, but I've said it many times, we cannot continue to, continue to make our population dense as opposed to our, our commercial and retail and non-residential property in the city. We are just too residentially dense, and we need to take every step we can to, to prevent that from growing and to make it what, what, what exists now, especially in the way of illegal residences and overcrowded residences, to get control over that, because that is what's killing us right now. The more we build, the more residences we build, the more places for people, for children to live, the more pressure we are putting on this school environment. And we are at capacity, really, right now and perhaps beyond. We certainly can't be sitting here in three or four years and saying, all right, now we got to bond another 42 million, well, by then it'll probably be a 50 or $55 million school. We simply can't do that, particularly looking at the possibility that we'd be replacing a high school within another 10 years or at the end of a 10-year period, as Dr. Dakin has suggested. So I, you know, just bear this in mind, and I think Counselor Powers alluded to it a few minutes ago, bear in mind, every time we authorize someone to put up another apartment building or condominium in this building, we're inviting disaster. Thank you.
Counselor, if I could just, you know, say to you, I hope, I hope that we never have to look at putting any kids back into the old McKinley School. You know, I know there's a lot of people out there that may say, I mean, well, jeez, I went to the Paul Revere School, or I went to the McKinley School, or I sent my kids there. I mean, I know myself, I sat in a classroom with probably 35 kids when I was in high school. It's a different learning experience today. You know, back when I was in school, presumably back when a lot of you were in school, it was a different world, particularly as it pertains to education. I mean, back then, a lot of people went off, they went out, either, you know, like, they went straight to work, or they, you know, there was always a job to be had. Today, it's such a competitive environment, you know? We've heard the term global economy, and there's, we're competing with people from overseas for jobs here in our own country. So it's, we, you know, we've got to provide schools, school buildings, educational experiences for kids that gives them a fighting chance. I mean, I think every parent, anyone that ever had kids that lives in this city, would want that for their kids. We're not doing this because it makes us feel good, or, this is, this is really, this is completely being done or requested for the future well-being of every kid in this city, so that they, when they do get out of school, they get into a decent college, or, you know, certainly have some of the skills that they may need to compete, you know, for jobs, that we all know how difficult it is and has become in this country, not just in Riviera or in the Boston area, in this country to find. So, you know, the last thing I'd want to do ever is to put kids back into that old building. I hope this is going to be the, this, I'm hopeful that this is going to be the final piece, and we don't have to start looking at other elementary schools, or certainly put them back in old schools. Thank you very much, Counselor, appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Reid. Okay. Lot of information has been given out tonight, there's been some answers, still some unanswered items. I'm not totally convinced, I feel like Counselor Powers, and I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Mayor, and I do thank, you know, thank you for your, you know, all the efforts you've put into it. You know, I know, you know, I didn't vote for the school the other night, I voted for most of the other items. And you know my reasons, and I felt very strongly to try and protect my people down on Ward Two. And, and I thank Counselor Powers for bringing up Garfield School as a potential expenditure that we're going to have in the future, which could be a larger expenditure. But just some notes, what bothered me at the beginning, okay, and even after the meeting we had on Saturday, the architect came over to me and he said, you know, we should have voted on this February 11th. I said, well, that's very nice, sir, but you know, we didn't get it until February 18th before we could have, you know, go for a public hearing. To me, February 11th was not enough time to come to us, and I know that the MSBA didn't bring their discussion to us until the week before that. Timing is everything, and I understand that, but it just, what, you know, what was said to me and the way it was said to me, kind of didn't appreciate. And you mentioned at the beginning of your, at the discussions, at the beginning, you said, if you lose, you're going to run between, with the tail between your legs. Mr. Mayor, don't feel that way. You know, it, it, I didn't feel that way the other night, you know, because I got outvoted. You know, I felt good, I knew I was protecting my people, and I want you to feel that way, no matter what happens here. You're doing the best you can under the circumstances and with what we have. So please feel that way. I did get a little giggle at the beginning when you called the McKinley School, the Paul McKinley School. So I know it was a Freudian slip, but I just got a little kick out of that. But one of the things that was brought up before about what the building will actually be used for, we know that, you know, the superintendent wants to move his folks in there, how many people are in his, you know, on his staff that would be moving over there? How many square feet are we going to be use, utilize in the building for this particular?
10,000 square feet.
10,000. Now, how many square feet per floor is the old McKinley School? Would they be taking up the whole first floor, second floor, third floor?
I couldn't give you an accurate answer to that, because I don't have that information in front of me, but you look at it, it's three floors, right? And I mean, pretty much familiar with the length, the width, I mean, it's got to be...
Mr. President, point of information, 12,000 square feet a foot, 12,000 square feet of a...
Per floor?
A floor.
Floor, okay.
Thank you very much, Counselor. So that's 36,000 square feet essentially.
So, you know, his staff would be moving into an additional 2,000, one floor.
Probably close to one floor.
And, you know, I wasn't going to say this till the end, but I will, I will put money towards the fact that, once the superintendent's office moves in there, that within this period of five to seven years, there will be kids in that school. I see, he already stated there'll be early childhood kids in there, that's number one. And I can see the Seacoast kids moving in there. I wouldn't want to see them in there with the early childhood kids, but I can see them moving out of Beauchamp. And Beauchamp has an exorbitant amount, or an extra amount of seats in there with Seacoast in there, and I can see Seacoast moving over to one of the floors over at the old McKinley Building. So that's what I see, and I do see Inspeccional Services potentially moving over there because they're cramped down below. As you said, there's water coming down from the, from the roof of the Legion Building, and they are cramped down there, there's no question, that they could use additional space. Whether or not we agree, or if Nick gets involved in it is another thing. So I could see potentially that happening. It was mentioned before about the underground oil tank, which I had heard prior to this, that there's an issue with that, that there was leakage. You know, nobody knows if it was actually filled with sand or not, you know, and all we know is that the cover was taken off and it was hot-topped by our own staff. That could be a potential 21 issue. It disturbed me the other night when that, one of the teachers came up and was talking about cockroaches, you know? Yes, it's an old building, but honestly, that's a maintenance issue. That's not an old building issue. You know, I, you know, I was in facility management for over 30 years, and I know seeing cockroaches is maintenance, not condition of the building as age-wise. The monies that Counselor Powers was talking about with the $4.7 million, what I'm going to lead into now is, when we talk net, net school funding, where does that actual portion of the school department funding come from? Now, we're, we're putting in, like I said the other night, 45 to 50% of our budget, $133 million into the school department budget, some of it has come back with Chapter 70, some come back with special ed, you know, but it's not 100%. So some of it has to be coming from the city.
It is.
If it is, then the taxpayers are paying for it.
No, but that's, but that's where the net school spending comes in. We have to put in, the city has to put in a certain amount of money. So whatever that dollar amount is, is not going to change because of any additional money that the school department spends. We're going to give them exactly what we're mandated to by the state.
But it's still city taxes.
Oh, I've never said that the taxpayers don't pay anything for the school. I've consistently said that we're going to, we're just going to meet net school spending, which is what we have, you know, that's our obligation to do so. And then, as Counselor Hassett alluded to, we've got Schedule 19 stuff that goes back and forth between, but...
You know, so, you know, and we were talking about taxpayer-funded and tax levy issues, you know, what, some people may not, don't understand that. You know, we're, the taxpayers are funding this to a point, but it's not included in our tax levy, because that tax levy is already included in the monies that we give to the school, something to that effect.
Well, well, yeah, I mean, you know, our tax levy is what we tax out to the public. So whether that's commercial property tax, personal property tax, it all comes back, and we have, we're able to go to our levy limit. Prop two and a half tells us we can go 2.5% each and every year above that limit. So that's historically what, what the city has done and what will continue to do. You know, as you know, it's not just paying debt service that the city has to endure at budget time, you know, we've got a, you know, what, I don't know, what expenses really don't go up around us. We have expenses going up all the time. I mean, people see that in their own households. And it does, believe me, it gets frustrating, but, you know, if, you know, you talk about a leaky roof, you know, if you don't fix the leaky roof, it doesn't get better on its own, you know? It just makes things worse. So, you know, you know, which is, I don't mean to digress, but it's one of the reasons, again, why these science labs aren't being paid for, because they say, you know, essentially what they're saying to us, you know, is we're throwing good money after bad. So they don't want to invest any more money into the science labs. They're saying, you know, we're not going to put $10 million in science labs into the high school and then have to come back, you know, five years from now and start talking about a new high school. You know, it's just so, so, you know, and, and again, this is something that, you know, that's a conversation for long, another day, a long time from now, I hope.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. You know, in, in actuality, we were talking about using our tax levy, the two and a half, anticipating that every year.
Yes.
But we also, and, and this money is the, the tax levy money. Now, we also have to realize, we've been using tax levy money all these past years, and that's been taken up by issues with health insurance, union raises, in this case, new buildings. So, you know, what's going to happen when we reach those limits and we don't have that availability of the tax levy, once we reach into this health insurance and union raises that we offer to us?
Well, we, you know, listen, I, you know, I totally, I, you know, I totally understand where you and other counselors that have expressed some skepticism are going with this, you know? You don't want to, you know, because of the uncertain economy right now, and because we, you know, we're never really sure about what we're going to get in state aid and so on, that I, you know, you want to be sure that we're still going to be able to provide the services that people are getting now. And I totally, I totally get that, I understand that. And, but, but, you know, and, and when you look at the whole picture, right? You talk about, you know, our tax levy, well, even Chapter 70 money that comes back is really tax money, it's tax dollars, it's all, all this public money is all derived in one way or another from either fees or fines or taxes, it's all, it's all public money. So at the end, at the end of the day, it's, it's, the taxpayers are footing the bill for everything. There's, if our budget's $145 million this year, and it's $151 million next year, and it's $160, it's all tax dollars. We're all paying for it. So, you know, there's no, there's no getting around that. You know, I, I guess just, you know, from my, my own personal perspective, it's, it's, you know, like, a couple councils have said, kicking the can down the street. I mean, how long and how far can we kick that can until it comes home to roost? I mean, it started, I think, under, under then-Meir Haas, we have, we started to have to make investments in our infrastructure. Prior to that, prior to that, for 60, 70, 80 years, you know, pipes in the ground were let go. And now what? We're left now, you know, for years and years of trying to come up with the money and figure out ways on how we can repair our infrastructure, our water and sewer lines and storm drains, because of years and decades and decades of neglect. And, and so, you know, is that something that we, that he could have predicted, or Tom Ambrosino could have predicted, or I could predict? We can't, but you know what? We're stuck with it. This is what, and so, you know, you can't always predict things that are going to happen. And, you know, like I say, if any one of us had a crystal ball that actually worked, that would be great. But none of us, none of us can predict exactly... But none of us, none of us can predict exactly what's gonna happen tomorrow. We just use the numbers that we have in front of us. I'm very happy to report, and I know that your city clerk, Ashley, has the information, if it's any short in the arm for any of us here on how we've all collectively handled our finances, I think we, we received one of the largest free cash certifications that we've had in a long, you know, long time. We, we, the Bureau of Accounts certified us at 2.8 million dollars of free cash. So, you know, I mean, I think collectively, you know, the mayor and the city council has done an admirable job in watching over our finances and doing all the right things. So this is, listen, it's a team effort.
I understand, Mr. Mayor.
And, you know, I mean...
Just a couple more items. I, I understood what the superintendent said about, you know, the number of kids increasing. Yeah, I understand that, but we have to understand that we're kind of forced into some issues with homelessness and kids coming in from out of the city, that we're forced to educate, give transportation to, the sped kids, you know, the sped family that we're involved with, and we're, we have no choice with that either, you know? And, and it's not that I'm complaining about it, it's just, it's another issue that we have to look at. It's an, issues that we have to look at as far as the illegals coming into the city and sneaking in. And I know we have staff to do that. But, you know, this is one of the issues that we keep increasing our school community, and, and I understand that. But, you know, we still have to look at, you know, we have, our seats are gonna be made available. And I know the council brought up the point about future schools, you know, whether it be in North Revere, yeah, I see that too. With new high schools, yeah, we'll probably have to see that. Whether we see that in, in my, my time, I don't know. You know, whether it be, you know, eight years, 10 years, I don't know that. But just some notes on that. I know Councillor Penta mentioned something about overriding that he probably read in the Lynn item this morning. But you have to understand, the City of Lynn only forces a 2 and 1/2 override when it's over $4 million. So they can do anything under $4 million. We have the opportunity to, we have no limit before we send it out to the people, or if we, we do that. So I, I know that's, that's an issue.
Well, Mr. Pre, point of information.
Yes, sir.
That is not true. We cannot just vote on $200 million bonds up here.
We just did $5 million, councillor.
And it was under the cap of 2, 2 and 1/2.
Yeah, I understand that, councillor.
But let me ask you a question. If we voted on 100 million, could you vote on it?
Not if it was, not if it was over 2 and 1/2, but Lynn...
Well, you just said you could, you just said you could vote on anything, so which way is it?
But Lynn...
Thank you very much for clarifying that.
Well, I'm not thanking you very much, councillor.
You just said it.
Because you have, you...
You just agreed with me. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't have to disagree with you, councillor, I agree with you. It's $4 million limit for Lynn. You know, we just did 55 million, but it was still under our 2 and 1/2. So Lynn, it's even, if it's under the 2 and 1/2, they still have to do a vote for over $4 million. Right, right. So with that, I'm not totally convinced that we have to do this now. If it was down the road and we knew where we were going, you know, it looks like the New Hill Schools, we said, someone said it would be, be ready to go in 2015, the McKinley renovations would probably be ready to go in 2016 or 17, and then we have to go into the high school renovations, once the superintendent moves out, and we'd talk, maybe 2017 or 2018. So, you know, we have a few years down the road. You know, I don't mind waiting. On the long run, if that building wasn't used by us, I wouldn't mind seeing senior housing over 55, increasing our housing stock for our senior citizens. That's a perfect spot for it.
You'd be talking serious money to renovate that school building for senior housing?
Well, that would be a developer or someone that we may, if we, if we decided to sell it to a private entity that could handle it, and I understand exactly what you mean. But, you know, we're doing it down in Shirley Ave, we got 525 Beach Street, new building, they're gonna be doing it, I believe, over in, at the old Riadens. You know, in that building, I know we're dealing with some folks on that, over 55. So, you know, if there was a second choice, that's what I would think, that would go. With that, you know, I, I, I think I, I've covered everything of my notes. I know over the last couple days I've been out tweeted, and, on, on the tweeting systems, and people have said that, you know, we're doing scare tactics to our senior citizens. I don't believe so. You know, over the 150 calls that I've received since Monday, that have supported myself on my thoughts, you know, and knowing that I wasn't voting against the kids, and I stated it that night, that I was for the kids, I knew we needed a school, but, you know, we still have to watch our, our bucks. And I, I still accept that, I feel strongly about it. I know in some cases you didn't agree with me, some other folks didn't agree with me, but, you know, that's the way I felt, Mr. Mayor. You know, and I hope you would appreciate that. And it's not against you.
I appreciate everybody's vote.
It's not, it's not against you.
You know, that's why there's 11 councillors, everybody gets a vote, and...
Right, and it wasn't against you or anything, it was just a personal feeling that I had. You know, and, you know, and that's, you know, that's the way I went with it. So with that, I believe Councillor Haas, you still want to say something before we shut down?
Yeah, basically, what I'd like to know is, we will send this to the committee, the city council in its entirety.
At the next regular meeting.
All right, now, when will that be?
April 8.
I will not, I will not be here April 8. So if we want to call for a meeting, just for the vote on it prior to me leaving, okay? If the councillors want to do that, and remove this from where it's at, and approve it or disprove it, I think we should have another meeting. And it's basically, I, I would say, an hour meeting, because everyone voiced their opinions on it. It's up to you, Mr. President.
Mr. Pre, we meet on April 2nd? I thought I got something April 2nd.
That, that's for, for kids only, special meeting for, for kids only.
But could we vote on it the same night?
That was, that was the night that Councillor Zambudo asked for a special meeting, and that's what we're having for kids only.
As Mr. President, since we, since we have a meeting on the 8th, on the...
2nd.
2nd. Let's address this through 2nd.
Councillor President, you can step aside, just on your agenda, very excited.
Yeah. Whatever the will of the council.
I just want to be recorded as voting and not just basically absent. I owe it to the children.
Very good. What's the will of the council? For those of you here, 2, 4, sacred... We have a, we have a quorum still.
I mean, you can be here anywhere.
Right. Do you have enough time to advertise anything?
You have 48 hours.
Right, we have time to do it, there's not, there's not a problem.
It's fine with me.
Councillor Rigo? Okay, well, we'll include that on the meeting for April 2nd. April 2nd? No problem, yeah. Thank you, councillors, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President. On the official vote of the subcommittee, I know there's only six of us here, but...
Committee of the whole.
A committee of the whole, yeah, subcommittee of the whole. Official vote.
Councillor Rigo?
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Criggio is absent, Councillor Gino is absent, Councillor Guanasso is absent, Councillor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Penta?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Powers?
No.
No, Councillor Riadon is absent, Councillor Zambudo is absent, and Council President Novoselfski.
No.
No, this bond authorization will be reported out favorably to the full city council. It's 4 to 2, 4 yes, 2 no.
Okay, so we'll have a meeting on April 2nd. Thank you all, appreciate it. Okay, thank you all for coming.